Welcome to Business Matters on Eastern Sierra Now with me, Amy Smith. Today, we're excited to welcome Tyler Beadle, a third-generation Bishop local and candidate for the Bishop City Council. Tyler's background includes an AS in business from Sierra Cosa Community College and his current role as Title Officer at Inumono Title Company. Before we dive into Tyler's vision, don't forget to like and subscribe to our social media channels, especially YouTube, so you don't miss any of our shows this political season. We're also offering special sponsorship opportunities for businesses perfect for advertising on our popular local channel. Tyler's platform focuses on preserving Bishop's small-town charm while promoting economic growth, supporting local businesses, and addressing affordable housing. Endorsed by former Mayor Laura Smith and the California Rifle and Pistol Association, Tyler is a strong advocate for law enforcement and first responders and the Second Amendment. Let's give Tyler a warm welcome. Tyler, welcome to the show. Hi, it's a pleasure to meet you.
Yes, thank you for inviting me. I really appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, it's great to have you here. I've done a little bit of homework. I've looked at your campaign and read what you're putting out there. I'm so excited to have you here to dive a little more deeply into some of the issues and concerns that are facing Bishop today.
Yeah.
All right, are you ready to jump in?
Yep.
All right.
Let's do it.
Let's do it. I like that attitude, great. I'd like to start just by talking and getting to know you a little bit more and talking about your motivation.
Yeah.
You're running for a seat on the Bishop City Council. What inspired you to take that step? And how does your vision for Bishop connect with the challenges and opportunities you see for the town in the near future?
So, I think, starting off with wanting to run, I think, growing up and throughout school and everything, I've always had a strong love for government, public service, helping out and everything. I really enjoy doing community service and I wanted to give back. There was a couple of things I didn't like the current council doing, so I would go to city council events, I would check them out, do my research and stuff like that. And then eventually after, I think like a year ago is maybe even a little longer is when I really decided that I wanted to run. So then at that point, I just started to get my ducks all lined up in a row so then I can sign up once the registration period was there. And then, and now we're campaigning and I have a decent amount of signs around town. I think it's going well and yeah, so could you repeat the question, please?
Oh, certainly, sure.
The last part.
So, the last part of it was, let me jump to that. How does your vision for Bishop connect with the challenges and opportunities you see for the town in the near future?
So, I really have, I want, so my goal for running for city council is to keep Bishop the small charm, the small town that we all grew up and loved, me going through high school here, me going to Sierra Cosa here. I love this area and I really don't want it to change. I don't want us to turn into a big municipal city like Los Angeles or one of those places down south. I really want us to stay our small-town charm that we have and that we've all grown to know and love. And I think that's why we all decided to stay and live here. It's the best place to work and play and...
I agree with you. I love the small-town charm of Bishop and I would hate to see that change. So, I appreciate you sharing that with us. You mentioned that you were going to town council meetings.
Yes.
When you were going to the meetings, did you feel that you were being heard at those meetings or were you there to gather more information?
A little bit of both. I was, I was there to educate myself because also I don't want to go around being ignorant either, talking about stuff that I don't know about, things like that. So, I really wanted to go to start to get a sense of the city, how they run and everything. I started reading the strategic plan. I started going through the website and that was when I decided that I want to run. Whenever I would speak at the council meetings, I feel like I was being heard but maybe not to an extent that I thought was fair to where, as to why I felt like I wanted to throw my hat in the ring and try to run for myself.
Sure, sure. So, running for a seat certainly would amplify your voice and the voice of others that are working for you and that are hoping that you get elected.
Yes.
So, thanks for that. And then looking ahead, what do you think will be the biggest challenge Bishop faces, say, over the next five years? And how do you plan to address those challenges? And what role do you see state agencies and organizations like LADWP playing in Bishop's development?
So, I believe that LADWP is one of the biggest government agencies that we need to deal with as being the city because we are almost completely surrounded by LADWP land. That's a big portion of our land within city limits also. They own a lot of land in city limits while also owning a lot of land around it. And so, they are definitely a crucial part. We need to have a good relationship with them. And I believe the biggest thing is getting a good relationship with the current council in LA too because it's not just, you could talk with bureaucrats here all day, but their boss is the LA City Council. So, the biggest thing is to get a good relationship with the LA City Council to where then we can work with them to, oh, 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 look, housing is a big crucial thing that not just our city needs, but the state as a whole.
Absolutely.
So, pitching it to the city of LA and that council that way such as, hey, hey, look, we're a struggling city too. Can we work with you to potentially purchase land or work with developers who will then purchase land to help better our city such as affordable housing options or just building structures or business that will better our city compared to ruining it and making it a big metropolis that we don't want to see.
And affordable housing, it is. It's an issue for the entire state of California. It's certainly an issue for this small community as well. With the limited space for development, how do you plan to tackle the issue while keeping Bishop's small-town charm intact? And are there any specific partnerships other than what you had mentioned and working with LADWP that envision, that you envision as part of your plan?
Yes, so I would say the biggest thing is because there is a lack of land in our area, I would say the biggest thing is working with what properties and structures that we already have. So, for example, Sterling Heights was recently purchased and that's a 50-plus unit building that's just sitting there vacant and it's been vacant for the last year or more because of the current back and forth with the current council and the owner. And I believe that the city could be doing a lot more and doing things differently to work with owners of structures around town instead of going against them because now we just have a big 50-plus unit building sitting there and nobody can use it. It's not being rented out. And the biggest thing that we could do is go around the city and identify the lots or current buildings that we can approach and then work with those owners or rather it be a lot owned by LADWP and we can work with them to get it developed and eventually made into affordable housing.
Gosh, so it would be city planning then that would be, you would be working with to bring those older buildings up to speed?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. And how do you see that, how do you see that working? Why do you think the buildings are vacant today? I know that Bishop has a lot of older buildings. I'm in the contractor field myself and I see them as well. Do you think it's code issues? Do you think it's just lack of interest by the owner? Why do you think those buildings are sitting there empty today?
I think it could be a mix of all of that. It could be coding issues, there could be, could you repeat the question, please?
Oh, sure, sure. So, we were, you mentioned Sterling Heights in particular and then you mentioned working with other structures that are currently existing that owners, that may be privately owned or owned by LADWP that are vacant, that you would like to see made available for housing. What do you think the issue is? Why do you think that those, that those buildings are sitting vacant? And then I asked, do you think it's code? Do you think it's city planning or just a lack of interest by the owners?
So, for Sterling Heights, I know that there's a lot of back and forth and I don't want to speak on stuff that I don't exactly know, but from what I can understand from it, there was a lot of back and forth between planning and the current owner. And I believe that the city council could do more to alleviate a lot of that pressure and help, instead of approaching the owner as someone who isn't doing good for our area, we should approach them as someone who is doing good, who is trying to bring housing to our area. He's a, I don't want to get specific because I...
Oh, sure, no. Only share what you're comfortable sharing. And we can look at this as a general plan as well because I know throughout Bishop there are vacant buildings. Little by little, I see some stores and some shops moving in, but there's still that effect where some businesses are vacant. So, we can talk about it as a whole, but that's whatever you're comfortable with.
Yeah, and then for the buildings that are currently vacant, can you repeat the question again?
Sure, I guess, so what we started talking about was affordable housing. And one of your solutions for affordable housing was to gain access to some of the properties that no one's using. And then I asked what you felt was the, what was stopping those housing, that housing and those buildings to be available. So, that was the question, but I think what we've, what we've gleaned from that is, and I don't want to put any words in your mouth, it seems like there's red tape and it seems like that's what I'm hearing you say.
Yes, there is, there is definitely lots of red tape. I believe the city can work on zoning better, make zoning a lot more small business-friendly. I really like the idea of residential units up top and then storefronts at the bottom. I believe approving more zoning like that will definitely help out small business and help our city thrive. There is, the city can also, apart from the red tape, I believe to help these vacant buildings, we can start to pitch ideas to companies to come here.
Oh, yeah.
And then the city can offer tax incentives, they can offer credits and stuff like that. The city can waive permit fees, things like that. Because in my view, if you're working to make our city better, you want to, you want to bring good shopping, you want to bring housing, you want to bring something that will better our community, then I believe that the city should definitely help you achieve that goal and instead of harassing you and going after you, hey, 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 these fees, you have to pay this compared to, hey, hey, let's welcome you with open arms. Here, we'll waive these permit fees. You want to become a store here? Okay, well, you're thinking about a residential unit upstairs? Okay, well, let's see how that will work. I believe though, one of the biggest things around our town is also parking. So, before approving things like that, we need to make sure that there's adequate parking for those types of structures and everything because if we don't, then you are approving buildings that then don't have any parking and you're gambling on street parking that soon might eventually become a bike lane or something like that to where now you don't have any parking for your structure and then...
And even just the convenience of parking for the shoppers and the congestion that additional vehicles would cause as well. I do like that idea of businesses on the ground floor and residences on top. Do you believe in allowing height, height code increases so that those buildings could be built a little higher?
Yes, not, not too high, obviously.
Sure, we don't want skyscrapers in Bishop.
Exactly, but I do like the little storefronts.
I love that.
And then a little like maybe a story or two, two or three stories after that, I think you're coming close, but...
We don't want to block our mountains.
Exactly, exactly.
I agree, I agree with you there.
We want to keep our scenery, we want to keep our town beautiful the way it is, so...
Yeah, yeah, I love that. And I love being able to look out from most places of town and see Mount Tom. It always just reminds me why I'm here.
Exactly.
And from what I'm hearing from you, you really appreciate the carrot approach, not the stick. So, you want to incentivize those businesses to come in and to join our Main Street.
And also, a big thing is like, right now, I could, I could go around and send emails to all sorts of corporations, but the way of that email probably has no weight compared to, let's say, I was a councilman. Then those emails would carry more weight and I think a big part is investigating, finding the right people to talk to and finding the right people to approach so then you can bring those businesses or those people to our city.
Sure, I think as a council member, I think that would be, it would certainly gain more attention than if just you or I were sending out emails. I really appreciate that response. I appreciate hearing what you think about Main Street and you and I have the same love for the mountains.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
That's great. Let's talk a little bit more about leadership and your experience within leadership. You've had a successful career at Inumono Title Company and earned a business degree along the way. How have these personal and professional experience shaped you for this leadership role on the city council? And what lessons did you learn from your journey that you think you'll be able to apply if elected as a council member?
All right, yes, yeah. So, I believe that me just being a title officer helps me because it's not just me. There is multiple parts, like some days I might need someone to do something in a file because I'm busy on something else. So, another thing about the job is a management too, directing certain jobs to someone else so then the overall picture gets done. And then, so, growing up, as I said, I have loved government and I think that, like, just growing up, I was a Boy Scout. I felt like that gave me a decent leadership role while also I've been, I am a part of the Elks. I've been, every time there's flags, I go out and I help the VFW put up the flags along Main Street and everything. And I just, I want to be a part of our city and I believe that I can help, help do that and...
Well, in your community involvement, I think it's so key for our elected officials to have direct access to the community members. So, thank you for working with the VFW, putting up the flags and being out there and hearing what everybody's saying, what they're asking for. Yeah. Tyler, let's talk a little bit about business lease issues. The ongoing lease situation between local businesses and LADWP has been a longstanding issue. How do you plan to address these challenges and what steps would you take to improve the lease condition for Bishop business owners?
Yeah, so I believe the biggest thing that the city can do to help address the lease issue is that we can contact LA here, work with them. If that doesn't work, from what I can tell, it doesn't, we can then start to reach out to LA council members, the people who are in charge of the ones here, possibly try to find your way up the ladder, but then I, I think another big thing is talking with those owners. What is the city doing? What does your lease say and how are they? Because from what I understand, they only allow them to rent, transfer the leases once and some people, they might not even be allowed to rent, transfer it once. So, I really, I believe the, there has to be discussion between the city, the city of LA and then whoever's in charge of the ones here making the decisions because whoever's making the decisions here, they aren't allowing no one to rent, transfer anything. And then, so what we see is now livelihoods on the line. You have businesses now going under. Well, we have an iconic business in town, the Red Horse Feed, which is now...
Oh, I had no idea.
Closed. I believe they haven't been open in the last couple of months.
And that's a leasing issue with DWP?
Yep, yep. From what I hear, because I read an article on that, is that the owner, I believe the last name's Allen, they've been trying to transfer the lease to someone for the last seven-plus years and I think that eventually his wife just ended up moving and I think it was more of like a retirement plan, like, hey, hey, I'll sell this business and then I'll go off and move. But now when they can't, they planned to sell their business to then move on and instead of being allowed to do that, they are now charged with the costs of removing the structure on the land. They are charged with even removing the asphalt. Once your lease is done, LA wants it dirt. They don't want no structure on there because they don't want to have to deal with it.
Yeah, I had no idea about that. I really appreciate you educating me on that and I can't imagine how heartbreaking that would be to put your life into a business and then not be able to hand that business where it sits on the ground to somebody else to continue your retirement, so. And you feel if we can talk with someone in LA, move up the chain with DWP, maybe that's the best approach in that, in that case, so. That's great. I really appreciate your time so far. We're going to take a quick commercial break and we will be right back. Welcome back. Let's continue our conversation with Tyler Beadle. Tyler, thank you so much for sticking around. I'm not going to keep you here too long, I promise, but I appreciate it.
Talk, kid.
Thank you. I appreciate everything we've talked about so far. So, let's, let's talk a little bit more about community unity and representation. You've mentioned how important it is to create a family-friendly atmosphere and support local law enforcement. How do you plan to foster unity within Bishop's diverse community? And with so many towns dealing with division over key issues, how will you ensure everyone feels heard and included?
I think the biggest thing for unity is to include everyone. Instead of creating things for specific people, specific groups, we need to include everyone because that's what unity means. It's inclusive of everyone, no matter what. So, when we start specifically targeting groups and then singling them out, giving them special treatment compared to others, I see that only causing division instead of unity.
And how would you ensure with so much division, all towns are dealing with divisions, but how would you ensure that everyone feels that their voice is being heard?
I, well, first, I think it takes listening, listening to the issues, find out the sources and the causes of those issues and then tackling those. Again, I wouldn't single out groups and instead make everything inclusive for everyone because as long as you are being inclusive and not singling out groups, then I don't believe there can be small, small groups getting mad at you if you're, are including everyone instead of singling out specific...
I appreciate, I appreciate that. Let's, let's shift gears a little bit to fiscal responsibility and budget management. You've emphasized keeping taxes low and ensuring fiscal responsibility. How do you plan to balance the city's budget while still funding essential services and making improvements? Are there any specific areas where you think the city can cut costs without putting extra pressure on taxpayers?
Yeah, so I, one of my goals is to not bring unnecessary tax burdens, but I also believe that there are certain taxes that are necessary as well, such as water, sewer, all that stuff, upgrading those facilities, that's all important because I believe that that is one of the main purposes of city government is to make sure that all the people have water, they all have sewer, they all have access to electricity, stuff like that. And then after all that's taken care of, then you can start working on promoting business, business growth, housing, things like that. So, can you repeat the question again?
Well, I think you've answered it beautifully because what we were talking about was not putting any extra pressure on taxpayers. And then two, I think it's important to note that the budget is balanced, but I guess what we should be saying is keeping a budget, keeping a balanced budget. So, I felt that you covered all the aspects of that question. Are you happy with your response on that one?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, sweet. We'll roll into one more question, then we'll take a short break and then I want to talk to you a little bit about the future. So, let's talk a little bit about law enforcement and public safety. You've been vocal in your support for law enforcement and first responders. What policies would you like to see to keep Bishop a safe place to live and work? And how do you plan to balance public safety with the town's changing needs?
Yeah, so I believe right now, and one of the reasons I live here is because our town is one of the safest, I don't want to say in California because I bet you the statistics are not there, but...
Sure, sure.
But from what I've seen, our town is one of the most safest, cleanest and I plan on keeping it that way. I want to definitely, if I win, I want to talk with the police force, the fire chief, see what they, they need and how this city can, can help assist them more. I'm not saying that they currently aren't, but I, that is what I would do.
And I love that, and I think a big part of safety is we feel safe here. And I think a big part of that is because we know each other. You know, we see each other at the grocery store, at the store, at the, we see each other at the grocery store, at our kids' games. We see each other at the grocery store, at our kids' games, you know, wherever it may be. And I think knowing each other goes a long way in promoting that feeling of safety.
Yeah, and then also, I believe our city is changing, too. Like, sometimes I'll walk to and from work. And I don't think that there's a day I look at the gazebo at the park and there's not someone sleeping there, standing around it, stuff like that. I live on Academy. Whenever I go off and do walks, or I'll just go and walk around the corner to the store, and there will be tons of homeless transients. It's all the same face, and it's sad. And I believe the city should work on something for this issue, because if we don't tackle it now, it will eventually get worse.
I agree with you. And then that comes back to affordable housing in some cases. It could come down to mental health service in other cases. How would you hope that being on the council would allow you to address the homeless population that we do see more and more in our Bishop parks and other areas of the town?
I would definitely make it a part of my goal to address that. I believe there's lots of things that the current council's doing that doesn't have to do with this. And that might be their priorities right now. But homelessness would definitely be one of my top priorities to work on.
And I appreciate you bringing that up, because I think it's not only for the community, but it's poor individuals that don't have anywhere else to go. So, yeah, I feel that need as well. So, yeah. Tyler, it has been so good to talk to you. I want to wrap up with one more question. But if you don't mind, can we take a quick break? All right, we'll be right back with Tyler Beadle.
Once upon a time, the world relied heavily on fossil fuels to power its cities and cars. Corporations controlled these fuels and sold them at high cost. Though these fuels were powerful, they were polluting the air, making the skies gray and the rivers murky. People worried about the earth and their future. Then, one day, a group of wise and powerful wizards gathered from all corners of the globe. They worked together to harness the power of the sun, capturing its radiant energy in magical crystals. These wizards bestowed these sun crystals to the people, teaching them how to use the sun's endless light to power their homes and vehicles. As the people embraced this bright new gift, rooftops sparkled with the wizards' magical crystals, and cars began to hum gently, driven by sunlight. The skies cleared, the rivers sparkled, and the air became fresh again. The world thrived under the warm glow of the sun. And everyone lived happily ever after, because as the good wizards showed them, the power to change the world was within each of our grasp the whole time. Here's to a happy and green ever after from your friends at High Point Solar and Electric.
Welcome back. Thank you for joining us. We are just about to wrap up our conversation with Tyler Beadle. But before we do, Tyler, I had just one more question that I wanted to talk to you about. It's about the future goals of Bishop. Let's recap a little bit. As you campaigned for city council, what are the key goals you want to achieve during your term? And how do these priorities, like affordable housing, fiscal responsibility, and business growth, reflect the future that you envision for Bishop?
So my main goals, we talked about a lot of them. But I believe affordable housing, the homeless issue, the LADWP lease issue, definitely the vacant buildings around town and bringing business to our town. All those are definitely goals and priorities that I want to work on. I believe that there's a big... There are tons of business owners around town who are worried about their parking, worried about the changes the city's doing to city land, where they are taking away parking and then instead replacing it with trees, planters, and all that stuff. I definitely love having a beautiful city, that's for sure. But also, I believe that we need to focus on the business owners and what issues they are facing, too. Because if we take away a business's parking, then they will not get that much of business. And then, it will be a chain effect. It could affect multiple people. And I definitely want to be a safeguard to go against anything that will harm our business owners instead of helping them.
Sure, let's make it easier for the businesses. And that's how we're all able to live and to work here, too. So I really, I can't thank you enough for sharing your vision for Bishop, your goals, and some of the things that are important to you. I look forward to watching your campaign, and I wish you all the best of luck.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot. And come back and see us after the campaign. Anything you want to highlight, we're here. And I know that our listeners would love to hear from you as well.
All right.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Tyler Beadle, and I'm running for Bishop City Council. And I am looking forward to your guys' vote this November. If you want to find out more about me and my campaign, check out beadleforbishop.com. Thank you, and I hope you guys enjoyed this video.
I'd like to thank you, our viewers, for your time and consideration. Today's discussion with Tyler Beadle highlighted the importance of preserving the unique character of Bishop while supporting thoughtful growth and development that benefits the entire community. With a deep commitment to our hometown and a focus on creating a brighter future, we can work together towards a stronger, more vibrant Bishop, where opportunity and community thrive. We'll be back soon with more exciting episodes of Business Matters with me, Amy Smith. And remember, stay mindful, stay connected, and take the time to enjoy our beautiful eastern Sierra.